The Falmouth Public Schools School Committee to order for April the 12th and the, oh gosh, I'm all out of order. See, Sharon, I'm so confused with our beautiful new agenda, and I'm the one that asked for it. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And do we, oh, beautiful. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public is not allowed to physically access this school committee, school committee meeting, and we are all meeting virtually tonight. But the meeting can be viewed live on FCTV Channel 14, and a recording is made available on our YouTube channel. You can also watch it on the Zoom link that was on our agenda. Melissa?
The Falmouth Public Schools' mission: The Falmouth Public Schools creates a world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Falmouth Public Schools' vision: Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes, and due to the open meeting law, the committee cannot take action on public comment. For items on the agenda, the Chair can accept comments from the public following the school committee's discussion of an item, and additional comments can always be sent to our email address, schoolcommittee@falmouthk12ma.us. And we're starting off tonight with an update from Superintendent Lori. Go ahead. Take it over.
Thank you. Since we have a brief meeting tonight, I'll be brief with my update. I have one important announcement to make. I'm very excited to say that we will be prepared to bring back our students full-time in person at the Falmouth High School, and the target date is May 3rd. So we just a little bit longer to make sure that we're all prepared, but we'll be ready to go. So there'll be a communication out to all the Falmouth High School families in the next two days from Principal Gans.
That's great. Wonderful. Any other items or just the one happy item?
The one happy one tonight.
Right. That's wonderful. Any questions about that for Lori? It's nice to see that they're not going to be left out of that. I know kids want to get back to school. So next on our agenda is the school choice public hearing. So we need a motion to open the hearing, then a second, then a vote, and then we'll take any comments from the public about our numbers for this year, for next year, and then the same motion to close, second and a vote. Melissa, do you have a question or are you making a motion?
No, I'll make the motion to open the school choice public hearing.
Thank you so much. And can we get a second for that?
A second.
Thanks Andrea. Okay, so is there anyone in attendance tonight who would like to speak about our school choice numbers for next year? And if you would like to see the numbers, we're happy to put them up for you. Just go ahead and raise your hand using the little raise hand button, and we'll bring up the numbers, and you're welcome to make a comment. Okay, with no comment, we'll take, oh, we forgot to vote. Oh, my goodness gracious. I forgot to vote on opening the hearing. I'm so sorry. We got to get it right. Okay, so Melissa had the motion and Andrea the second, and it's a roll call vote. Bill?
Writer, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
John?
Fenari, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Canoplis, yes.
Where am I? Andrea? Andrea. I already got you. Terry?
Gary Medeers, yes.
And I'm also a yes. Sorry about that. That passes unanimously. I can't believe nobody caught me on that. Come on. Help a girl out. Okay, and we had no public comments, so now we just need to, a motion to close the public hearing. Melissa, thank you. And a second. Thanks Natalie. And it's again a roll call. Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill?
Writer, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
John?
Fenari, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Canoplis, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thord, yes.
Thanks. Terry?
Gary Medeers, yes.
And I'm also a yes, so we'll close the public hearing. Thank you so much. Okay, next up is acting on the revision of the 21-22 school calendar. So everybody would have seen this in their packet. Lori, did you want to explain it? Do you think we should bring it up for our members of the public? How would you like to do this?
So it's just, it's two small changes that we're responding to. You've already voted on the overall 21-22 calendar. I am proposing two changes. One would be on the, instead of opening up school on September 7th, we would open up school as first day for students on September 8th. And the reason for this is that September 7th this year is Rosh Hashanah. We normally do not have that as a school holiday or recess day. However, this is the first time in many years that Rosh Hashanah is the very first day of school. We have many families that celebrate, and we have many staff members, and the staff members do have the right to have that day off. And so being the first day of school, I do not want to put our families or our staff in a situation where they have to choose between their practice and in the first day of school. Normally, it falls on any other day in September, and we don't have that off. But because it's the very first day of school, I believe it could create conflict with our families. So I'd just like to be respectful and honor the September 7th. So we would be starting one day later. The second change that I'm proposing is that it is in June, and that would be June 20th, which is a holiday. It is a state holiday. It's Juneteenth, because June 19th, which is Juneteenth, falls on a Sunday. It is celebrated on a Monday. So Monday is a holiday, so that then would move the last day of school to Wednesday, the 22nd of June, because of the delay in the day in September, pushing that off a day, and then pushing off the day for the holiday on June 20th, then that would, we would return to school on the 21st, and then a half day on the 22nd, because every last day is a half day. That's if there's no school days. Otherwise, it's, it would be the 29th. So two changes in the calendar that I'm proposing.
So the first one that you had mentioned, you know, I'm not sure, I tend to forget whether or not the emails come just to me. I usually try to always forward them on to the rest of the committee, but we did get some, we heard from some staff that there are a number of staff that take that, that day off. And so we would, we know already that we would have a lot of absenteeism from our staff on the first day of school if we were not to move it for Rosh Hashanah. So, and also from the Jewish community in general. So I'm glad that we caught it early enough that we could actually, you know, nobody wants to go to school on the first day of school and have a sub. That would be really hard for kids, especially some kids who maybe haven't been in school in person in quite some time. So are there, is there any questions or discussion about the two changes? So laying the start, and John, go ahead, and then Andrea?
Yeah, just, I think this would be something that would be good to have out to the community as well to get a feedback, just because of the, you know, with, with, you're talking about September of, number one, I'm trying to get a handle on which year you're talking about. So the, the, the one, the start of school would be September 2021, right?
Of this year, right.
Okay, so then that would, because I'm looking at my, the calendar, and it has that Labor Day, Rosh Hashanah begins at sundown on Monday, the 6th. So then that, so then you're saying Tuesday to be off, the, the second day of Rosh Hashanah, and then, so then Wednesday to come in on Wednesday. And I, okay, and then I, because I just think people, because it's such a dramatic change of not coming back the Tuesday afterwards, and then just, you know, and because there are a number of, and I have a respect for all of the different ethnicities. My family actually celebrates Jewish holidays myself in addition to, in addition to Catholic holidays. It's just a disclosure there. But with regards to that, the number of folks that would be affected, I do think that, you know, that the, in, you have different religions that might have more, you know, or less affected or whatnot. And then if we open up to different things, then are we then with other dynamics of, in other words, is there a non-secular reason? We know that it's going to be, and if we have a threshold of how many people we think, you know, if it's, if it's, if it's 6% of the population versus 69% or 75% of the population, that then it's a, then it's a non-secular reason versus a secular reason. And then that opens a precedent for other ones that, again, I don't know. I don't know what the threshold is that you say there's X number of people out, other than somebody emailing, and then on the, and what those numbers might be. And then on the, on the Juneteenth side, Lori, if you wouldn't mind, so the, the actual dates of Juneteenth are, and then when, when is this proposed date? I'm sorry to have you.
So Governor Baker declared June 19th a state holiday. This year, we did not have to change our calendar because June 19th falls on a Saturday, and when the holiday falls on a Saturday, it is celebrated on a Saturday. When it falls on a Sunday, then it is celebrated on Monday. So June, a year from now, on June 2022, the 19th falls on a Sunday, so we would celebrate it on Monday, the 20th.
Okay, and that's what the rest of the state would be doing anyway?
That absolutely is required by the state. So yes.
And we can't be open.
Desi, yeah, no. Desi has already put out the calendar that that is how the holiday is celebrated. So, so that, that one, I don't believe we have a choice on that one. But I just wanted to recognize it is a change in the calendar for next year.
Andrea, oh, sorry. Sorry, Andrea, you were next, and then Terry?
Yeah, so thank you. And John, I'm going to just add on to one of your comments because it's something that, you know, has been going around my head too, in terms of when, what are those holds, right? Because I noticed when I was looking at my calendar is that Ramadan, and we have town meeting, and it did just jump to my mind, like, huh, was that a good idea or not? So I'm not going to get into that because I had no clarity or insight into what to do. I think this coming school year, the, the move for Rosh Hashanah, which is something that we've done on a regular basis, you know, offering that for our staff to not be able to come that day, but to make it a good opening for all of our students, you know, postponing that seems to make the most sense. The one thing that I just wanted to throw out there as a request is that when, when I got this agenda item and the calendars, I'm like going back and forth, trying to figure out what the change is. So just maybe like a little, you know, kind of blurb about what we're going to be discussing, because like John said, you know, trying to get some feedback and input from people, I wasn't even really sure what the, the changes were. So, but thank you. And I think this is pretty much a no-brainer.
Andrea, you're exactly right. I apologize. It didn't even occur to me to have a little line in the email that went out that said, here's the change, you know, because I already knew what it was. And so my apologies for that. Well, we can do that better. Terry, what was your, what is your thoughts?
Well, Andrea kind of touched on it. It's just, it's the first day of school, which is, which is a special consideration for this holiday. Normally, it's given without any, it's observed, however people want to. But being the first day, that's just a, a different slant on the day itself, let alone being a Jewish holiday.
Yeah, that's a fair point. It also doesn't happen very often.
No.
I don't, I, in the seven years, we've never even had this conversation, and not because we messed up, just because I don't think it has fallen on the first day in those seven years. Leah, go ahead.
So I know the, the district that I work in, we have acknowledged that and changed our calendar for that, that date. So I'm, my question is to you, Lori, is around, do you know for the Cape schools, if this, this is what is being done? Has there been discussion about it?
So many of the Cape schools have already moved to a school start date before Labor Day weekend. So it would not end up being a first day for them. So we, there's very few districts at this time that still start after Labor Day.
Does Leah, is that which we're looking for?
Well, I guess, being in a district that does start after Labor Day, we're doing the same thing. So I guess maybe, you know, I'm not sure if that would help, but just understanding a little bit more if schools are doing this, that might help kind of with John's poll too, of figuring that out.
And I remember when, when Desi really started to push for people to start before Labor Day, you know, granted, a number of the members were different at that time, but the committee and the district as a whole felt pretty strongly that we not move to starting before Labor Day. But, you know, maybe at some point, we should, when we have our calendar discussion, talk about that again, if that's something that the committee is interested in at that time. That's totally unrelated.
Make a comment about, just because we have so many seasonal workers, like our students work a lot during the summer. So I think that, you know, we definitely would have to have a lengthy conversation around that.
Oh, yes, we cannot do that tonight, for sure. Okay, any last questions or comments about the change to next year's calendar, 21-22? Okay, is there a motion to approve the change that includes moving the first day of school and observing Juneteenth?
I'll make the motion.
Melissa and Terry, I saw your hand up quickly. So Terry, on the second, any last comments? And it's a roll call. Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill?
Writer, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
John?
Fenari abstained.
Natalie?
Natalie Canoplis, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thord, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also a yes, so that passes. So that was the first calendar item. And then the second one is a first read of our calendar. So this is our, our series where we're taking them a year in advance. So we will look at this one today for the 22-23 school year, but it's only our first read, and then it'll come back to us later on. And I'm almost tempted to bring this one up so that the public, I mean, I know we don't have a lot of people attending, but that doesn't mean they're not watching on TV. Is everyone all right with me bringing it up on my screen? Okay. Apologies for the scrolling. I should have been on the right page. Oh, it's sideways. I don't know if I can. Any tech gurus tell me how to switch it?
Kelly, you need me to jump in there really quick?
Yes, can you show, can you share it so that it's not sideways?
Can I tell you how to do it really quickly?
Sure.
So on the left-hand side, there's a little triangle on the very thin border, very thin border toward the middle.
Got it.
Click on the pages icon. It's the, of the three, it's the top one.
Yep. Got it.
Right-click on that.
On the one I want?
Yeah, the one you want, and then.
Rotate. Clockwise, no, I want to go clockwise. Oh, thank you so much. Fabulous. Okay, Lori, is there anything of note that you wanted to point out on this now that we've got it up for everyone to see?
It's pretty straightforward to the calendars that we've, we've had. We'll start school the day after Labor Day on September 6th. We have, all the professional and development days are the same. We have a half day on the 23rd before the holiday break, and Juneteenth falls on June 19th on a Monday, which is the holiday. So that would be the only other thing that, but everything else is straightforward from all the calendars that's been approved in the, in the past.
Any questions about this or comments while I have it up, and I'm trying to scroll through everybody, but if I can't see, feel free to just pop in.
Kelly, I'm going to jump in.
Go for it.
So looking at that, so that last week of school, we basically have a half day on a Tuesday.
If there, if there are no snow days, correct?
Yeah.
Or emergency days of any kind.
Okay.
We did discuss this with the, the, the union. So the FBA weighed in, and they were, they were actually okay with that. We know that, we hope that everyone will return for the half day on Tuesday, if there are no snow days, and that's it. But they felt that they could, that it would be fine, and that they could prepare for the week before, make sure that, you know, all special activities and all for everybody. It would be that way, even if the 19th wasn't there, we'd be coming back on Monday for a half day. So all it did was push it off till Tuesday for a half day.
Right, great. Well, thanks for getting that input from the union as well.
I mean, I guess the, you know, this is a working document. So I guess the only thing I can think would be if we were to take the 22nd of December, you know, if we extended the winter break, then we would come back for a day and a half in June if there were no snow days. But then, you know, part of me hesitates to plan around, you know, we just don't know what's going to happen. We could have five days of, of snow in that year. I don't know. I mean, does anybody have any thoughts about how to make it so we don't come back for just a half a day? Or does it even matter? Leah, I can see you. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I just have a comment about snow days. I mean, I'm thinking that we might be able to not have snow days. Can you see me still? Sorry.
No. Okay.
Well, I can't, but I can hear you. Go ahead. Because, I mean, depending on what the commissioner says, but we might be able to offer room instead of snow days, just as a thought. So I don't think we should, I think that might be an option for us in the future, which I'm hoping for.
But I think that's a decision that we would probably have to make as a committee as well, whether or not we would want that, because we did talk some about whether or not we even would want to have that, or do we just want to preserve snow days as a concept? So if we get to that point, I think that would come back to the committee to make that decision too.
Yes. So I, my thought is just not banking on, you know, having snow days necessarily.
That's fair. Yeah. Terry, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah, the last two calendars, I was thinking about the final exam schedule at the high school. So they would have to like back off another day of classes then, right? I don't, that won't mess this up with the DESC, will it?
No.
Okay.
I'm going to stop my share unless anybody, oh, Melissa?
I'm just thinking back to Christmas break, having the 23rd off. Wasn't that a request from the union that we have, that we observe Christmas on the last weekday before the break? I feel like that was part of a discussion a few years ago.
So they, Melissa, they specifically asked when we reviewed the calendar, I gave them the option of, of exactly that, right? Do, would you want to have the full day, which would then, again, put, to your point, if it was a full day, it would put us off to the 21st in June, a half day or, or no day at all. And they did request the half day on that day.
Okay. I just, I remember a conversation circulating that at some point. So I'm glad that that was discussed with them.
Yeah, me too. I didn't really, I didn't remember that, Melissa. Thank you for bringing it up.
I don't know why it stuck out in my head. I feel like it was maybe two or three years ago.
Yeah, I don't remember. Any other questions? I'm sorry, John, you were not on my screen. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, no. So just a clarification now. So on, on this, if we vote on it, because the prior calendar that we just had another vote on, my recollection is we actually voted on that twice. So, you know, we had voted on it once, and then we voted on it because there was a tweak on, on the, you know, Wednesday, virtual Wednesdays or what, or half days on Wednesdays. So once we vote on this, you know, if there are other items that, that come to mind, I submit that it wouldn't necessarily be necessary for us to necessarily vote on it. If there's something that's like a state mandate thing, like Juneteenth, of course, that would just, that would just be automatic that it's a state holiday. So sure. But any other things that are kind of variable things, I, I submit that when everybody watches us and we vote on something that we, if the calendar is set, then we, you know, then we, future items, we can address at a future time. That's just a, something I wanted to share. Thank you.
I'm going to stop my share so I can actually see everybody. Okay, that's so much better. Any last thoughts about this? And it'll come back to us. Lori, are you think it'll be the next meeting, or will it be a couple meetings? I'm not sure what the timeframe is for when we usually approve this.
Yeah, I was planning on bringing it back on the 27th of April.
Okay.
Unless you request something different.
Okay. All right, great. So I think that's it on that. And of course, if you think of something before our next meeting, you know, share it, share it along, send it along so that you can make sure that what we have is finalized. Next, we have acting on a gift from the Mass Audubon Society for the Science Department. Patrick, is there anything we need to know about this? Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't looking at you. No, just a general deposit for the Science Department to get to use. Wonderful. Is there a motion to act on the gift from Mass Audubon?
I'll motion that we approve the $1,000 gift from Mass Audubon Society for the Science Department.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Natalie. Great. Any last questions or comments about this one? Other than a wonderful, oh, go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, exactly.
We really appreciate, it's a lot of money, and thanks for thinking of us. And I know the Science Department will put it to good use. So thank you.
I'm sure. And especially in a year when we may, you know, they probably need a lot of extra supplies because they're not, people aren't sharing the way that they used to. It's probably going to be really appreciated. It's a roll call vote, and Leah, you're first.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Bill?
Writer, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thord, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Canoplis, yes.
John?
Fenari, yes.
Terry?
Terry, yes. And could I get a point of order? The last vote, you, you didn't call on me. I don't know if that matters, and Sharon keeps the tabulation.
I did. Man, I am off my game. You can tell I did not sleep well last night.
I mean, I.
I wrote it was unanimous for everyone. So I commend you, Terry.
Okay, that's all right. I just, you know.
The left, so Terry, are you a yes for this one?
Both of them, yes.
And I'm also a yes. So that passes unanimously. But Melissa, I just want to make sure your notes show that the revision of the 21-22 calendar was not unanimous because John abstained.
Yes, I have that there.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I figured you did, but just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So the donation is gladly accepted. And next up is our discussion on the acknowledgement of Wampanoag tribal lands. So this was Leah, she's already gone. I was going to call on her first. This was an item that Leah had requested at our last meeting to have on our, on a future agenda. But obviously, she must have had to leave. I think she said she had a work, a work meeting. So we will, we know, we can at least speak about it briefly, but I'm sure she's going to want to add to it. So I don't know if anybody had a chance. There was nothing in the packet about that, about land acknowledgement. But I was thinking we, you know, we should at least touch base and discuss what one would look like. We don't have one to share. We don't have a draft of a land acknowledgement to share. But we can at least talk about what it is, and see if people have additional things that they would want to know, or considerations that they would want us to look into before bringing it back at another time, hopefully with more information and with Leah to be able to, at least we can gather some information. The, the couple things that I did do was look up some common land acknowledgements and why people do them. And one of the things that I found explained that it's generally to acknowledge the longstanding history of people who resided on a land, and that, and frequently to acknowledge that, that Native Americans are still living in, on that land currently. So the one you might remember the best was the one that was presented during our meeting, I want to say in the fall, when the representatives from the Wampanoag tribe came and they shared their land acknowledgement. And you may have seen that they just won a really large national award for their work with the tribe. And you may have seen that they just won a really large national award for their work with the tribe and the land acknowledgement being part of it. So I think I was able to I think I pulled it. Yes, I did. So I'm gonna share my screen so you can see what theirs looks like as just a that's not it. That's undergraduate education. I don't think anyone wants to look at my husband's presentation. There we go. So this is what the Mashpee one looks like. And this is the actual land acknowledgement. It says, welcome to our traditional homeland, Mashpee Public Schools, recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoag people who have lived and been sustained in the territory for more than 10,000 years. And you can actually watch it in the traditional language. So this was the one that we saw, and it had this image. And if you remember, these are posted in all of the buildings in Mashpee, and they actually have a QR code, so you can hear it read to you in traditional language. So there are two, from what I can tell, and this is, I think, the extent of the what I know about it, there are two types, and some are read at the start of each meeting or a public gathering, and the others are posted in buildings. And those, that's the extent of everything that I know about it from Leah asking to have it on the agenda and me trying to do a little background reading. So I don't know if anybody wants to weigh in on what they know about it and maybe create a fuller picture, or if you want to offer any questions, and then we can take those under advisement and try and gather more information. Terry?
Could we ask somebody from the Wampanoag community who's familiar with it to give us, I think that would be a more thorough, respectful way to approach it.
I think that's an awesome idea. I think you're totally right. To to help create one or to just advise us on what they are or a little bit of everything.
A little, an explanation, basically, because I'm sure that they said something, but there was, that was a wonderful presentation. But there was so much information that personally, I'm embarrassed to say I forgot that part of it, but so.
Yeah, it was a lot, though. We learned a lot that night.
They give great presentations. Be great to have them back.
Yeah.
Okay, I love that idea. I'm writing it down. Anything else? Andrea?
Yeah, so just the the last few days has been the National School Board Association virtual, the annual conference, and the the Magna Awards, of which Mashpee was one of the recipients for schools under 5,000 student population. They did a very thorough presentation of all of their work, including the land acknowledgement. And it did speak to a little bit about the what that means and 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 why it's important. And I think the the piece of that too is that everything that was crafted there was crafted in partnership. So this isn't something that we would develop. It would have to be, you know, worked on together and maybe the the head start that Mashpee already has in crafting that. And since we're dealing with the same tribal community, that it may just be a very simple thing to do to to transfer that over to Fama the public schools.
Great. Melissa?
Hi, so what would this look like when we say transfer it over? Is it a notice that's put up in all the buildings? Is it something that's red? What it, what are we, what are we signing up for?
I I don't know. I mean, those are the two, and there may be even other types that I don't know about, but those are the two that I I have heard of. So I I've seen the signs that Mashpee does, but then in Toronto, whenever there's a public gathering, I happen to be up there visiting family, and they say out loud at any public gathering before it begins, something similar. So I've heard one and I've seen one, and then maybe there are even others. But maybe that could be part of, oh, Natalie, please tell me you know.
What? Continue your thought, and then I'll
Maybe that's what part of the conversation would have to be, I guess, is which it would be or I don't know. Melissa, go ahead. Finish your thought.
So I was also thinking that, you know, we're kind of long overdue educating the students of Fama about our the native land and the the tribe that's been here way longer than we have. And I'm a little, you know, hindsight's 2020, and it would have been great if we did this when the Mashpee kids were going to Fama High School, but great, we're doing it now. So I applaud that we're doing it, but I I perhaps this is like a rolling like a rolling, what am I trying to say? Sorry, I'm also exhausted, Kelly. I've not slept well.
I know I'm in good company.
So I love that we're doing this. And I just want to make sure that we're thoughtful about it, and we're not just like, we're gonna put it in every building, we're gonna say it before every meeting, we're gonna, you know, it's gonna be part of every kid's backpack every day, and it's gonna be, I just want to make sure that we're being mindful and not just all in for the sense of making up for lost time. I just, I really want to be mindful, and I really
Yeah, that's fair. I appreciate that. That's really fair. Yeah.
You know, it's it's great that we're doing it, and I I love that we're doing it. And I love that, you know, my kids are gonna get way more education than I did on this, although I'm learning now, which is great. But I just, I really want to make sure that we're not just, you know, getting all the bells and whistles for the sense of getting all the bells and whistles and not just, I really want it to be purposeful.
That's totally fair. Yeah. Natalie, what was your thought?
Okay, yeah, just a few thoughts. Number one, I echo what Andrea and also Terry mentioned, that we want to be culturally sensitive. So this definitely needs to be a partnership with the tribe, and they should definitely take the lead on crafting the language and what that looks like. And also, there are committees in town that have begun to make statements before their meetings using different languages. So it is something I think that is becoming more and more common, especially in Fama. But I think, you know, we can start with however we start it, but we definitely need to make sure we work in partnership with the tribe on this one.
I like that. John?
Yeah, I just, I'm supportive of the tribe. My family and I attended their government center, government center ribbon cutting years ago, and it was a great event. With that said, just a correction on what's being taught. I mean, I've had the the benefit of sitting in with my daughter on her Zoom calls. And just this past year, there was a super extensive background given about the Wampanoag tribe and the history and everything. And it was for several days, actually, that it was covered in the schools. So just a clarification, that's what is being covered in schools right now. With regards to the making any kind of announcement, with regards to any group, I would I would defer to whatever the state is doing. If the state is, I really feel that we follow our bylaws and and that, you know, the state is doing it and the and on the state level, if they do it, then we should do it, but not on our own. And then there's also the notion of anytime you acknowledge, I was a property owner in Mashpee, and there was a big concern. Obviously, a lot of the reason why land wasn't developed in Mashpee until the eighties. There was a real question about what the ownership was, and you had to get specific title insurance. And so I I would be, you know, cautious as a property owner in Fama to be part of anything of a a town endorsement of saying someone else is a owner of a land, especially with any kind of litigation that's going on, you know, currently with organizations in other locations too as well. So I would be against making any kind of statement of that at the beginning of the meeting. Thanks.
And I think, you know, working with the tribe, they could help us understand what the language usually is, because there, the Mashpee one doesn't say anything about land ownership. And the few that I've seen don't either. So where I think, you know, I think it seems to be coming across that people are interested in at least pursuing it a little bit and see where, see where we're at. Lori, maybe you could reach out to the tribe, or I mean, I'm certainly happy to as well. And and just maybe just have some conversations, invite them to come and join us and and help us be a little bit better informed.
Yeah, I would love to.
Okay.
And we'll connect with them.
Okay, I'm sure Lisa's gonna be, or Leah's gonna be frustrated because she didn't get to participate, but she can watch the tape. And that was all we had. Did anybody have anything else they wanted to add to that item? We didn't have on the agenda updates or questions from the committee, but we do have time for that. And we can certainly include those in our minutes, and we don't take any action on them anyway. If anybody has anything that they would like to share. Andrea already mentioned the conference that she was at this week. Is there anything else you wanted to mention from that?
I was assuming that we were gonna run out of time because we had to skedaddle to town meetings, so I haven't prepared that, but I was planning on doing it the next meeting.
Oh, that'd be great. That would be wonderful, too. Terry, did you have something you wanted to share?
Well, I've been going to the the weekly meetings of the Emerald House started historical society program that's being worked on. There's a lot to it, so I'm having a lot a hard time explaining it, but it's phenomenally interesting. I'm learning a lot, and I think once they're rolling too, that it would be good to have someone from that organization come and speak to the school committee. I don't think until next year, but
Okay, but we can still put it on a list for next year.
Yeah.
Okay. Any parting thoughts? Anyone else? Great. How about a motion to adjourn? Melissa, thank you. And a second from Lisa, and it's a roll call. Bill, you're first again.
Ryder, yes.
Lisa?
The heart, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrea?
Andrew Thorold, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Calapolis, yes.
John?
Frenari, yes.
And Terry?
Yay, yes.
And I'm also a yes. So we're adjourned. See some of